Mr. Iavino.
Here.
This is Roger Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Altrenio.
Here.
Superintendent Smith.
Here.
Superintendent Gray.
Here.
Superintendent Sullivan.
Here.
Ms. Oliver.
Here.
Student Representative Caitlin Abell.
Here.
Thank you. First item of business is the approval of minutes for two sessions, the executive session of April 6th and the regular session of April 6th. Mr. Iavino so moves. Mr. Altrenio seconds. All in favor on the minutes?
Aye.
Second item is public comment. And now it's time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the committee to come forward and public comment. And if you would, please give us your name and address.
Alyssa Hume.
155 Essex Street.
155 Essex Street. I'm here because I think Mrs. Marty's class being closed is not right. Mrs. Marty's class teaches me math, science, and how to do experiments. Math because I learned fractions and measurements, and science from seeing how things change when you mix the ingredients. It makes me feel good when I see the foods when they're done. I look forward to Mrs. Marty. I also like sewing because it teaches me coordination. Basic skills, I'll need basic skills from it when I grow up, and it gives us a break from classwork also. It's fun while we're learning. And actually, I know a lot of the teachers, and they're wonderful to me, and a lot of kids can't learn it at home, and Mrs. Marty is the wonderful, wonderful teacher to do this job and actually loves it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Louise London showed, 10 Spruce Street. I'm a graduate of the Malden Public Schools, and I'm employed at the Salemwood School. I understand that you all have an extremely difficult job at the moment, a job that is requiring you to make tough decisions. And I know that one of these tough decisions involves the possible elimination of what we in the Malden Public Schools call exploratory classes, which include, among others, cooking, sewing, tech ed, perhaps previously known as woodshop. And I also know that the point has already been made by parents, by students, by teachers, that not all students are on the college track. Not all students are into academics and may end up spending their lives, perhaps very successfully, working more with their hands and with other gifts that they've been given. And not all such students end up going to the Volk. But I'd like to make a quick point that I'm not sure others have made yet, and I'm asking that you consider it. For some students who are not successful in a traditional academic setting, hands-on exploratory classes like cooking, like sewing, like tech ed can provide a safe place, a safe haven, where such students often are more likely to feel successful and perhaps nurtured. Such feelings of success and the comfort of nurturing they may receive in such hands-on classes may prompt such students to remain in school, to continue their studies, and eventually to graduate from high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other speakers, we'll consider the public comment portion of the meeting closed. We'll keep it open for the time being.
My name's Felicity Kway-Krea. I live on Summer Street in Malden. There were some interesting statements and plans made in the Malden Evening News that were quite a bit concerning, especially because in correspondence with the fact that it almost seems like the budgets aren't being really considered for being changed. But it's just the fact that, like what Adam said before me, that maybe college isn't for everybody, and some people are starting to feel like the options are now going from, oh, well, I can go to college, or I can go to a technical school, to I'm in an AP course, or I drop out.
Seeing no other speakers now, we'll consider that portion of the meeting closed and move on to the other agenda items. Again, thank those that have taken the time to voice their concerns during the public comment session. Thank you very much. Deliberations. First item is a resolve regarding Safe Roots to School Trail, and Mr. Winslow has brought it forward for the committee's attention. Mr. Winslow.
Thank you, Chairman Powell. I just became aware that in the vicinity of the Salemwood School, there is a proposal of expanding a business onto the rail right-of-way, and I have a couple of concerns related to that. As you know, I've been an advocate of a trail, and that trail ultimately can connect up the high school, the Salemwood School, and the Linden School, and be an alternative for students to get to school. And in these times of both, you know, having to deal with childhood obesity and implementing our wellness program, providing alternatives for, you know, kids to get to school is important. So that's one of the things, providing alternatives, you know, I am also working with some students at the high school who are interested in having bicycle racks at the high school, so this would be one way that students could get to the high school as well. My concern is that the business is talking about expanding behind Gans Tire onto this right-of-way that the MBTA owns, and that could ultimately create a blockage of the trail there, also limit some alternatives for parking that we need there. So I put this resolution up so that we can talk about this as a committee. My suggestion is that the resolution be referred to the Safe Roots to School Committee and that we could work on going forward with that. Ultimately, the Safe Roots to School Program, as we get more schools involved with that, there is funding available to make improvements for Safe Roots to School around the school. So that is one of the options in these tough fiscal times. There is money available that the city could pursue if we get the schools more involved in this program. So I would be willing to take the lead on that through the Safe Roots to School Committee that we already have. So that's my resolution, that we could start looking, that as the committee, I would work with the Salemwood School to get them involved in the Safe Roots to School Program, and then work ultimately to find the resources through this Safe Roots to School Program to get the trail going. But to make it a commitment to see that, you know, the school committee sees this as an important thing in the long term. I mean, the other thing, we talk about fiscal things, one of the things I've observed in my position in Somerville is that the trail over there is very popular, and it helps increase property value. So as we're struggling with, you know, talking about cuts, it's important to bring as much quality of life to our community, and this trail can make a significant impact there. Where, for instance, in Somerville, there's over 500 people an hour using the trail. You see daycare kids walking on it, people walking their dogs, students getting to and from Davis Square area. So I think it's important for the long-term quality of life in our community and to benefit our students, and to allow some options for kids to get to school by, other than, you know, being dropped off all the time. So that's why I put it forward. It's a long-term thing, but I do think it's important for the school committee to send a message that this would be something important to work on. You know, granted, we're not going to use, you know, school department resources ultimately to implement this, but the school committee's commitment can help leverage, you know, programs that the city could tap. So that's it. So, thank you.
Questions or comments from Mr. Winslow on the proposal? The resolve is in the packet, and Chair would note and commend Mr. Winslow for his commitment on this particular topic. He's been working on it for a long, long time, and slowly, some things are beginning to fall in place, and we hope that there's a successful conclusion in not-too-distant future for this particular. Mr. Altrenio.
Just a point of clarification. Who would this resolve be going to?
This would be, we do have a Safe Roots to School Subcommittee set up. That's Mayor Howard, and Mr. Duffy, and myself. So that my proposal would be to refer to that committee for further consideration, and that as we develop that program, that Subcommittee would handle that.
And it's-
And that would also allow the mayor to have participation from the MRA or whoever else might be involved here, so.
And it's the city that will be allowing this business to expand?
The-
Is that-
It's the MBTA.
Oh, it's MBTA property?
The MBTA, you know, has offered to have the city take control of the right-of-way, and I believe the city does have an agreement related to the Salemwood School. So this would, you know, encourage the city to act more quickly on taking over the right-of-way. You know, the city has successfully negotiated with the MBTA to have the right-of-way up to Main Street and down to the Everett Line. This would, you know, encourage the city to move ahead with the stretch by the high school, by the Salemwood School, and by the Linden School. So that this would just work to expedite that process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Altrenio. Other questions of Mr. Winslow on the proposal? Otherwise, the recommendation is to so refer to committee on Mr. Winslow's motion without action. We have a second. Second by Mr. Duffy. All in favor?
Aye.
Refer to the committee. Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Winslow. Item number two is cleaning out of the Jenkins Auditorium. Mr. Iavino, update us on that effort.
It's quite an undertaking. A group of former Malden High School graduates, my wife Joanne, Tony Dickinson, Diane Lind, and of course Barbara Tolster from the Historical Society, upon a request from Dana Brown, have done a lot of work underneath the Jenkins. It is a treasure trove. You can get lost looking at old stuff and old records and school records, and it's really very, very interesting. There have been a number of boxes marked dead files, old desk drawers, there are some musical instruments, there are a couple of pianos. One of the concerns that we have is that there is some old furniture there, and I don't know the process of what it would take to have some of that declared surplus, and maybe, you know, put it for sale to the general public, and perhaps either that money could go into the general treasury, and I'm sure there's a need for additional funds, whatever it would raise, or what this group of folks, these four people have done from their, two years ago, when they spearheaded the 150th anniversary of Malden High School. What they would like to do is to purchase some archive boxes and to look at the possibility of hiring an archivist to, in fact, preserve the history of Malden High School, which is very, very interesting. It is one of the 10 oldest high schools in the state of Massachusetts and ranks as one of the oldest in the country. There are, down underneath the auditorium, in addition to two pianos, there were numerous bound copies of school department pay warrants as early as the 1950s and some as recently as the 90s, and we have to look at maybe shredding some of that. This group of people to whom I refer, these four people, they've put aside and moved into a room on the second floor adjacent to the Fannoff Library. There are birth certificates that they found from the late 19th century, bound volumes of student grades from the early decades of the 20th century, and school reports from the very early years of the 20th century. And that is something that this group, and hopefully there's a sentiment to want to preserve that as part of Malden High School, is archives. They have uncovered, believe it or not, a trophy from the late 19th, early 20th centuries at a time when Malden had a polo team. I don't know if too many people are aware of that, but Malden High School did have a polo team. There is a significant amount of athletic history down there as well, game records. There are 70-odd containers of films from the golden days of the Golden Tornado Football Team, when there's, I think in 1948, Malden High School went to a bowl game in Florida, and they have a tape of that. All of this is important to history of the high school, it's important to the history of the city of Malden. And as a former history teacher and being married to a wife who was really a history buff beyond compare, I was just looking for some direction, specifically on what it would take to have old desks, declared surplus material, and how that would, how would we go about doing that? Would we have to work through you, through Dominic Frimano? How would that happen?
I think short answer is we should contact both legal and purchasing-
Okay.
-to determine how we consider the articles to be surplus and allow them to be disposed of in the most economical way. I think that's probably the starting point.
Okay. They have cumulative files that go back, as I said, to the early part of the 20th century and to the mid-20th century. And one of the things that these poor people are willing to do, God bless them, is to volunteer two days a week each and to, once we have everything put aside, old cumulative records, we have the student, we have all the grades put aside in a different location. But we would be more than willing to give anybody who's a graduate of Malden High School the cumulative record if they, you know, they wish to get it. So again, that's something that they're considering doing, and it would be volunteering on their own time. But they would like some seed money if possible, and I think that the way to get that would probably be by having the items down there, two old, three or four old desks declared surplus property. I don't know what you could get for them, but whatever you, whatever we could realize would at least get the process started.
Yeah, I think the, so short of having an archivist, would the effort here be able to catalog the kinds of items that you are coming across?
Yeah, well, I think that they could do that. I mean, it would take additional time, obviously, but-
Because I think the first step in declaring something surplus would probably come with a vote from this committee.
Okay.
That the agency that has title or possession of the property would determine for the purchasing agent's benefit that the items are in fact surplus and the system no longer needs them. So I think one of the first steps might be having an accurate ledger or accounting of what it is that has-
Then bring that back to the committee, the future meeting.
-bring it back to the committee and have the committee make the recommendation that those items can be disposed of as nonessential to the functioning of the public school system.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments on Mr. Iavino's report? Mr. Winslow.
I just had a question. Would there be interest, do you think, in the Historic Society of actually taking some of the records and that information?
Well, the Historical Society, they may be interested in it, but I know that their room at the Malden Public Library, I don't think that you could get a piece of paper stuck in there. I mean, it is so full. And of course, that has not been archived either. So I'd prefer to see the, as a member of the school committee, to see the history of the high school preserved by these people who are willing to do it and trying to find some money, perhaps maybe donations, people that are interested, going the route that the mayor suggested of having the property declared surplus property. And it's probably not more than a few hundred dollars that we're talking about that is down there, but at least it's a start.
Do you think we should propose a resolution to authorize the surplusing, or just get a report next meeting on that, or what?
Chair would suggest me at least know what I'm talking about first. So the articles, list of articles be brought forward for our consideration.
Thank you.
Other questions of Mr. Iavino? Seeing none, we can keep it on Mr. Iavino's desk for the time being. The chair will work with him as part of the clean-out effort at Malden High and bring further information back for the school committee's consideration. The next item is the consent agenda, and item one is the approval of programs and courses for Malden High School program of studies. Mr. Fröjo.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I refer to the policy manual, school committee policy manual. And in, like, you have the sheet there, in the policy manual, it suggests that any major changes in the program of studies should come before the school committee. Now, I know last year, there were major changes made in the Volk Ed program. They eliminated the Level Four, which is a major change. Now, we're talking about, for this year, we're talking about eliminating the wood shop. They've already started, the kids, the students are already choosing their courses, and we haven't gotten any program of studies. I'd say it's a major change that's being done, and we haven't, the school committee hasn't approved it. Probably about five or six months ago, I went over to the Department of Education, and I forget the woman's name that I spoke to, but she assured me that if major changes were made, I explained to her what happened last year and what looked like was going to happen this year, and she told me that that type of thing should go to the school committee for a vote. We should vote on the, and there's been other changes made in the program of studies that we really should have something to say about. That's, I'd like to probably refer this to the policy committee.
Point of affirmation, Mr. Altrenio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we move this to policy, which I have no problem with, there is nothing in the Mass General Law that, the school committee has the right to approve of the curriculum as mentioned in policy IGD, which we put this into policy probably about four or five years ago, Mr. Fröjo. When speaking to the Mass Association of School Committees, most school committees across the Commonwealth, when they adopt policies, refer to finance, because by voting the budget, whether it was last year, the year before, or this year, the school committee then, in effect, has approved any curriculum adoption. But I do agree that if there are any major changes, even not relying on the finance committee, that the school committee is aware of it before the program of studies. If students are selecting classes now for next year, when we haven't approved the budget, I'm not sure how that can continue. So you bring up a good point, Mr. Fröjo, and, but again, the school committee's way of, and it's very acceptable, of approving a terminating a shop or anything like that can be made through a vote on the budget. Last year, the budget was voted nine to nothing, so that was our way of approving the curriculum change that was made by the administration. But for this year, you bring a very valid point. So just a point of clarification, what I researched over the last couple of days. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Altrenio. Mr. Winslow.
I just had a question. There was a couple handouts that were handed out before the meeting here, and I just had a question. Are these proposed changes in the curriculum, or are these-
All right, some of those are changes, some of those are listed in there that there's a Level Four class, which does not exist. I just wanted to point that out, that there are inconsistencies in the program of studies.
So this handout that says at the top, Transportation and Power CP, same as Level Four Automotive, is this a proposal for change in those courses, or is this the current course description?
The reason I gave, now you're talking about the course description?
Yeah.
All right, just to answer that, they have, the auto shop has a working agreement with the New England Institute of Technology to, you know, any courses, when they take that course, they have, all right, they get a college credit at the New England Institute of Technology for taking the course. But, you understand what I'm saying?
Well, is this a description of a course-
This is a description of a course, but it's not, but if you look down below, let me see, the prerequisite. What I'm trying to point out is that what's on, what's on the program of studies isn't exactly what's happening in the classroom.
So the second handout is the program of studies, then?
It's, that's from the, that is the current program of studies.
And then this is the second, then this one that says-
Well, that's, that's the beginning of the, that's part of the program of studies also.
Okay.
I don't know if I'm making that any clearer.
No, I just, I wasn't certain if this was a proposed change as a force, or whether this is what's happening now.
This is what's happening now.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Okay, great, thank you.
The Chair will have some questions. Ms. Abell, recognized? You can make that microphone there.
I just want to say, I think Mr. Fröjo brought up a really valid point, because the scheduling has begun, and once the scheduling's begun, you can't make, it's hard to make changes. So if any of these classes are being switched around next year, the guidance counselors are so overwhelmed with the classes that they fill up quickly, so if students are going to have to make changes, it's really difficult for them to do. And also, the later the changes have to be made with our classes, the farther the students will fall behind, because they're going to be behind in their classes when they switch. So like, I think that the scheduling with the classes is really important, and we have to like, recognize that.
Thank you, Ms. Abell. Other? Just for a point of clarification, just so that the Chair understands what it is the member wants to have done here. The, it would, I would seem to gravitate to Mr. Altrenio's point that by taking up the budget and everything that is considered under the budget, especially for cuts, curriculum adoption policy talks about a lot of new programs. But it's clear that we're cutting certain things as proposed under the superintendent's budget, hasn't been voted yet. But just so that I'm clear, it would seem to me if we vote something in terms of a cutback, that's a vote on curriculum.
I understand that part, but what I'm trying to say is, if there is, right now we're proposing cutting the wood shop, right?
Well, not to interrupt, but we're proposing, at least, technically, cutting a lot of things.
That's a proposed, no, I'm just using that as an, for instance, we're cutting the wood shop. Now, students are making their choices, they're not choosing the wood shop, because as far as they, as far as the guidance counselors feel, there, there's no wood shop.
May not be, may not be there, right.
All right, now supposing the school committee, in its wisdom, decides that we don't want to cut the wood shop?
And I imagine that it's still there.
So what do, like, like Caitlin said, all this, all this scheduling has been done, the guidance counselors are overwhelmed. Now then, are they going to go back again and reschedule people?
I would assume that when you're in these kinds of situations, when you're dealing with what will be there and what will not be there, yes, you may have to make changes on the fly right up until the beginning of the school year, theoretically.
Because I know of instances where students have tried to make changes, in these type of instances, and they actually have been refused.
Well, that's a different topic. Well, that's a different topic, but.
Well, I'm just.
But again, I'm just, so that the committee is clear on what the point is, I think, I hope, is that whatever we vote, whatever is there at the end will be the curriculum of studies, whether it's in Malden High School, or whether it's in one of the elementary schools, and students will have those things to choose from, that end up surviving whatever cuts might have to be made. And I would assume that, you know, any student would be allowed to elect into anything that's available to them, as of the beginning of September.
Okay, but I understand what you're saying. Mr. Avino?
No.
Oh, I thought, I thought you wanted to begin on this.
The only distinction I'm trying to make is that refer to policy does not in some way override what the committee would ultimately do by passing a vote on a budget.
What I remember, what I remember from previous years, not last year, but previous to that, that the principal would come in around January with the program of studies, the school committee would look it over, and they would vote on it, and they would say, okay, this is, this is it, make, maybe make, I know one year, they had one of the principals make a lot of changes in the, in the program of studies. They didn't like the way it was written up. And we haven't, we haven't seen any of that, that's, that's my main point.
Well, I think that's, again, not to dominate, I'll get to Mr. Avino in a second, but I think that's a function of, we haven't told them what they're going to have, to be able to announce for a program of studies, because we haven't voted on what the budget is.
No, but preliminary, even in those years, there was, there was no budget, I mean, the budget never was done until May, June, and, and it came before the school committee. That's, that's just, that's what my point is.
And in a year, in some years, there have been cuts, where things had to have been put on the table, and some changes have been made. I think this is a little bit more severe of a year, but again, I go to my point, that in the end, there'll be money applied to, you know, the program of studies at each of the school locations, and, and they'll, if woodworking is a course that's available as a result of the committee's action before the end of this, you know, beginning of this fiscal year, July 1st, then, I, what I'm getting at is, I don't know what ramification referring to matter that policy would have, other than hopefully whatever is done is synchronized with what comes out of the budget. If policy makes a recommendation that woodworking, that's what I'm getting at, is if that woodworking or any other course selection should survive the budget process, and that does not happen as a result of a full committee vote on what the budget ultimately is, then.
So, would it be better to give it to the budget subcommittee?
Mr. Avino?
It actually is in the budget subcommittee now. We've had the proposed recommendations from the superintendent, amongst many other changes that are happening weekly, if not daily, to the numbers given by the state, so what I would feel comfortable with, and it's up to the committee, is to continue this budget process, and once it's referred, the budget is referred to the folk committee, by you not voting on the budget or something, or voting in favor of, or not in favor of it, is your way of approving the program of studies. But I do agree with Mr. Froyo, is that a preliminary, in some sort, to, this is a different year, I understand that, and Mr. Froyo makes a good point, but I think if we continue the motion we're doing now, and as part of the finance committee, I think that would be the best option. We're doing that now, we're looking at the program study by the numbers, by the budget.
Right.
Yeah. And it's not the best way to do it, but unfortunately, that's the way we have to face that this year.
And again, I have no qualm with the matter being referred to policy, and if the policy subcommittee comes up with a recommendation that something or another survived the budgetary process, that's, that's all well and good. I just don't want any misunderstanding as to what referring it to policy means in the outcome of things, when the budget, in fact, determines what survives and what doesn't survive, based upon the superintendent's recommendation and the input from the principal, that's all. Ms. Avino?
I agree with that, I agree with what Steve is saying. So in the interest of cleaning things up, I can withdraw that motion. However, I think the point here is that if youngsters, and to speak to what Caitlin had said, pardon me, if youngsters want to take an automotive class, or they want to take a wood shop, and the wood shop is, if everybody hears that this is going to be cut, that's going to be cut, they don't sign up for it, it's like a self-fulfilling prophecy. I mean, we need to, before you can say that there's not going to be a wood shop, before there's not going to be this, that, or the other thing, we have to pass that in the budget. And, and I agree with that. But kids aren't going to make those choices if they don't think it's going to be there. And then everybody's going to be hell-bent the first day of school, and there'll be a line 25-deep at each guidance counselor's door, saying, well, I didn't know that we could have this, and they said we couldn't have that. So I think that we need to clean up the process. If cleaning up the process means sending it to the policy subcommittee, then, then let's do that. If it means staying in the budget subcommittee and having additional discussions, then let's do that. But I want to make sure that if kid, if student A wants to take a shop, that child, that boy or girl has to be able to know that nothing has been cut yet, and that they can make that choice now, and that they will be able to make a change if a change is necessary, and not be told, well, it's too bad, because you're not going to make any changes now. I would be very, very, I would be incensed if that were the case. Thank you very much.
As I think most members rightfully would do. Ms. Rivera Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is my feeling that the curriculum adoption that we had with file number 1 G D, that we adopted a few years ago, is for the purpose of, things do go to budget, as everybody has discussed, but then, a program of studies is presented to us by the principal of each individual schools. So at that given point in time, if we don't approve with what he brings forward to us, we can, we can vote no against it, and not accept the program of studies that's being brought forth to us. So I personally don't feel that this needs to go anywhere, except just to follow through the process, budgetary process, and waiting on the principal to bring forth the program of studies, or waiting to see if the budget gets voted through with the eliminations of different programs. So, because this is just clean-cut, we will be informed of the different changes, once the principal brings the program of studies for us to vote on. And then that's our given, given time that we pick through it and say that this is not being offered, why isn't this being offered, and whatever, so I just think it should just stay as is, is, and not go to the policy.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera Rogers. Well, again, the matter's brought forward by Mr. Froyo, and we can, sorry? It says it's brought forward by you, we can, and I, did we make a?
No.
I have withdrawn.
True is motion.
All right, do you want to speak on the withdrawn motion?
No.
All right, motion withdrawn for the time being. Point made, obviously, that we want all of the opportunities that are there at the end of the budgetary process to be openly made available to all students. I think the administration and principals understand that point.
May I ask a quick question?
Mr. Altrino?
Just a quick question to the superintendent. Superintendent, when are the students in the high school given their sheet to check off what they would like to take for electives, or, you know, courses?
They're in the process of doing that.
They are, in our, who put together the sheet that lists all the courses?
The guidance office with the principal.
And are the shops or whatever is proposed to be cut on those sheets as a choice?
I believe that they, they still are on that sheet, but I would have to get a copy of that sheet for you.
Okay, because if they're not, then that sheet, as part of the curriculum, should be seen by the committee, but if they are, then, then we'll just continue, and once the committee makes a decision on the budget, then we'd adjust the appropriate forms. But they shouldn't be taken off until everything's official, I would say.
Right.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification.
For you, can we request a copy of that sheet, so that we can see it for the next meeting?
Would you mind, Superintendent, next Monday?
Can do that.
Thank you.
So noted. That completes the, I'm sorry, does not, on the revised agenda, we do have the approval of policies regarding pregnancy, date rape, and suicide. We had previously referred that to the subcommittee on policy, and I believe Ms. Rivera Rogers is bringing back the subcommittee's recommendation. Ms. Rivera Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the last meeting, we had tabled for this meeting three policies that we were bringing forward. We were bringing forward the date rape, statutory rape, suicide prevention, and student pregnancy. I had liked to recognize Ms. Karen Reynolds, that worked on these policies, and that way she can just give us a little history about them, to the committee as a whole.
Be glad to have our director of nursing come forward. Good evening.
Hello, thank you for having me here. We've been working, a group of people, the adjustment counselors, the school nurses, the health teachers at the high school on the late entry days for almost two years, on trying to update some of these policies that we feel is very important, that has to be across the board, because we're finding some of these things are now occurring in the elementary school levels, and the counselors and the people there, the teachers, they have no guidelines, so we were trying to put this together that would cut across the board, and we would be able to have a similar policy for everybody to act on, and who they know where to go to touch base, and everything along those lines. And we're hoping that this is finally brought to fruition.
Questions of, questions of Ms. Rivera?
As a matter of fact, could you just give us a little bit of history of how other districts have, which policies that they may have, and who you've reached out to, and who are reaching out to us?
Other school districts have got some in terms of certainly the suicide prevention policies. To my knowledge, and I've contacted about 10 different school systems across the state, nobody has any specific policy on pregnancy or rape, date rape policies. In fact, they have, when I approached them, they have said, if we come up with something, they would like to have copies of it, because they also feel they need something for their school systems that they can use. And so, it's, as I said, going back to suicide prevention, we haven't had any, we've had some suicide attempts in the high school over the last 10 years or so. We haven't had any actual suicide within the high school, or within any of the school system, probably going back about 20 years, and somebody, a couple of you people may, who've been around for a long time, may remember that we have, certainly, we have pregnancy, and our pregnancy rates are increasing. We are above the state average at this point right now. And unfortunately, as when we had a health curriculum within the elementary school systems, our rates were below the national and the state average. In the years that have now expanded, when we haven't had a health curriculum across the board, our rates have increased. And, and I know there's an issue in terms of money, and I clearly understand that, but we need to look at having some sort of policy that puts this all together, and is in simple language that everybody can understand.
Other questions of Ms. Reynolds and/or Ms. Rivera Rogers? Mr. Altrino?
Ms. Reynolds, thank you for coming tonight. In regards to the pregnancy policy, in the, in the first sentence, it mentions the state statute of mature minor, used 12 years or older, I emphasize 12 years or older, can access reproductive health services without the consent of a parent. Are we looking in this policy to provide these contraceptives?
We are not looking in this policy at the present time, not to say that down the road we may not, but at the present time, no, we're not looking to do anything along providing pregnancy prevention contraceptive.
Well, the policy says, but are not limited to, so written in the policy, it would give the Malden Public Schools the right to hand out these contraceptives, is that correct? According to how it's written here?
Not according to the way we wrote it, and again, I don't have the policy right in.
Well, I'll just read the sentence. These health services covered by the mature minor statute include, but are not limited to, reproductive exams, contraceptives, pregnancy testing, emergency STD and HIV, abortion services with judicial consent, sexual assault, services in emergency KIA. So I just don't know if, in this policy, does that give the Malden Public Schools the right, in our nursing office, to hand out these contraceptive devices, et cetera?
When we wrote that policy, it was not the intent to be able to do that. The intent was to be able to, now forward to students who have, have these issues, to outside areas for follow-up. We, you know, again, we do not intend to do that at this time in that policy.
The intent is not there, but?
The intent is not there.
The policy doesn't specify whether we will or we will not, is that? So, okay, just want the committee to be very aware of what your, this pregnancy policy could open itself up to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Altrino. Other questions? Ms. Rivera Rogers?
Just further discussion on that, on that sentence there. When it states that these health services covered by the mature minor statute includes, but not limited to, in other words, you're stating that the intent of, of this, this policy is to direct them to a health service for these not limited to?
Correct.
More or less reproductive exams?
Right.
Contraception, we wouldn't provide contraception, but we would direct them?
Correct.
To the health services that would be able to assist them?
Correct.
In those given situations?
That's it, yes. We would not be doing those ourselves.
But it's not stated clearly in the policy?
Does not, if the policy just appears to be a restatement of the general laws, it does not take up the issue of whether or not the Malden Public Schools will, or will not provide such either counseling or services, that is probably something the policy subcommittee should elaborate on, that it is, or is not, the policy of the Malden Public Schools to not have any healthcare provider, provide the enumerated services.
Okay, maybe we could just, maybe we can look at this a little bit more to?
I think it's fine to adopt, you know, we're adopting the general law, which is, which is fine. I think Mr. Altrino's good point is whether or not we want to be on record, you know, from a policy perspective, as to whether or not we provide any of the enumerated services that are authorized to be provided to a 12- to 19-year-old within the public school side. So that's the further topic, I think, that the policy subcommittee should probably take into consideration. But I don't see, I don't see a problem with passing what's being proposed here this evening. I do have a question on, but I'll defer to, any other members have some questions? Mr. Duffy?
On this policy we're discussing right now, under requirements, the first line is a pregnant student must submit a doctor's note confirming the pregnancy. Isn't this unconstitutional according to Massachusetts law? Weren't we looking to strike that line? No?
No, it was, we did strike what was there before. This note just confirms it, what it said before is that it was essentially that the student had to have permission, you know, from the doctor to pursue a course of study. That has been stricken. This is right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Other questions? Ms. Reynolds, I'm going to ask the question to both you and Ms. Rivera Rogers. Do we do, on these particular policies, suicide, date rape, and pregnancy, do we do any current outreach or formal notification to parents who have a student who hits, looks like, at least as it applies to the pregnancy policy, that 12-years-old is?
According to the pregnancy policy, no. The suicide, yes, we do.
The suicide, yes, we do, but the pregnancy...
I don't, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut, I'm just, I think I'm talking about two different things. Do we tell the parents that there is a policy in place? Do we do anything to notify people? By the way, the Malden Public Schools does have a policy regarding pregnancy policy, date rape, and suicide. You should, you know, either look at our website, or go to our policy manual to get information regarding what our policy is if you have a student in the Malden Public Schools who has reached the age of 12-years-old. I understand the confidentiality part about, and I think, I don't know whether most parents would know, that there is an affirmative obligation under the general laws for people like yourself not to break the confidence of a student as young as 12-years-old, who may in fact become pregnant. And there are corresponding obligations for a student who may find him or herself in, you know, suicide situation. And there's also some, you know, affirmative information under the date rape policy. So what I'm getting at is, do we, well, Mr. Altrino was just telling you what the pregnancy policy says. It says, number one, we could be providing services if we so thought that was the right thing to do, we're not. But all these other items that are covered under the mature minor statute prevent us, affirmatively prevent us, from telling a parent for a child who finds themselves in need or in want of any of these services. I'll just give you a hypothetical, assume I am right. Student comes to Ms. Reynolds, who is 12 or 13-years-old, a young girl, and said, "No, it doesn't say I'm pregnant, but I want contraception." Now, we're acknowledging here tonight that we're not providing it from on-site, but I would assume that Ms. Reynolds might say, "Well, you might want to go to your doctor, or you may want to go to this clinic." But the very fact that the student is investigating those kinds of issues, this ordinance specifically prohibits, Ms. Reynolds, from telling that student's parents. So I don't know if parents understand that part of it, that there's an affirmative obligation on us not to reveal or break the student's confidentiality to their own parent. And I don't know if many parents would understand that as part of what the law implies. So what I'm getting at is, do we do any notification to any parent who has a student who reaches that 12-year-old benchmark with an assistant? By the way, there is a statute about, and a policy about, mature minors. There is, we do have a policy about suicide. There is a date rape policy. Are we doing anything to educate the Malden parents that there are such policies in place without, you know, going into the nuances of the policies themselves? That's, but now that we're adopting them affirmatively, and the obligation is already there under the general laws, but now that there are a policy of the Malden Public Schools, do we, either through the nursing department, or through Parent Information Center, want to put in place something that says, as a parent of a Malden Public School student who is at 12-years-old, you might want to be aware of what these particular statutes in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts say? You put it in the handbook? Exactly.
That's our view. That would be our view. Put it in the handbook.
Sorry.
My question is, I mean, how can you call it a mature minor statute? Mature at age 12? I mean, we have, there's no way that, you know, wouldn't parents, I'm sorry, I can't...
It is just my...
I find it appalling, I find it appalling, that a parent can't be notified that their daughter is about to give birth to a child, going to give birth to a child. I mean, it's, I don't, mature and minor, to me, it's an oxymoron if there ever was one, and I don't know that they're great in general court, what the heck they were thinking when they came up with this, but by God, I can't support that, I'm sorry.
Well, it's the law.
That's the law.
Correct, yeah. Besides...
Ms. Rivera Rogers?
Excuse me, a little, just a little clarification, whatever. In my eyes, the way I see this, we have nurses, we have health providers within our Malden School District, we have individuals that, girls, boys, whatever it may be, can go to speak to somebody about somebody so personal and in need of some assistance to just discuss it. Maybe they cannot speak to their parents, okay? Maybe they're afraid to speak. We just don't know what the situation is. And if we put this wall up to, more or less to scare them, that they cannot go speak to the nurse, or another professional, to discuss something that might be able to assist them, I, I don't think we could send out letters to everybody, or at least notify a parent of the situation, why the youth came to discuss a given situation with them. But as the Chair has stated, for informational purposes, to make parents aware of different policies that are being brought forth by the, by the school committee, with the superintendent's assistance, we can do something to get this information out to parents.
The Superintendent has suggested they have a student here.
Yeah, I believe as, as is the case with any policy, we use a student handbook as a vehicle to do that. I think we need to be careful about which policies we choose to highlight and raise above the level of the student handbook. And I think that the idea here is though, there are instructions here to personnel that are important to get not only in a student handbook, but in a handbook the personnel has access to. It does, on the one hand, say that the law does not compel disclosure of a student's pregnancy to her parents, but it, but it also says that school personnel, nurse, and adjustment counselor are to make every effort to encourage the student to inform her parents, and to facilitate communication between parents and student. I think it does try, it does strike the balance to try to live within the, within the confines of the mature minor statute, whether you agree with it or not, but to also have our professional people be involved, and encouraging them to make every effort to inform, to encourage the student to inform the parent. So I think that this is important information that needs to be in the hands of parents, kids, as well as, as personnel. The handbook is our vehicle to get it to students and parents.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question, kind of clarification. On the pregnancy policy, does, one of the lists is sexual assault services? Doesn't that contradict with what our, the date rape policy would be? Because I would consider date rape as sexual assault. So we're saying, on one hand, we're gonna, we call the police and talk to the parent, even if the person doesn't want us to, but on the pregnancy one, we say we, that's the law and we can't?
I understand the contradiction. I mean, we're basically just putting, going according to what the law is, in that that's, you know, and unfortunately, that is the law for sexual assault. We do know that, in most cases, you know, nothing is ever filed, because it's a boyfriend-girlfriend situation, and technically, it could work either way. If one's younger, the other one could file, you know, assault charges. I think, you know, we're just trying to stick within the confines of the law, but having something there in place for staff to feel comfortable with, to talk, you know, touch base with the people that they need to touch, so then these people then can put, you know, talk to the students, and put them in, you know, in contact with, you know, proper people to, you know, sit down and talk with them, and to make their decisions one way or the other.
But back to that, if, so should we be looking a little more closely at the date rape, to make sure that it, we're not, you know, we're going against the law then, if we say that we're gonna...
A lot, all of this stuff, we took directly from the law. We were very, you know, we were very conscientious about that. You know, we also had, at one point, we had, when Veronica oversaw the nurses and the adjustment counselors before she left, she saw this, and then turned it over to the attorney that they use. And they pretty much said, you know, what we had was within the law. You know, certainly that we needed to follow through in terms of our school attorney, if there's anything else that he wanted. But basically, everything was within the rule of the law. Okay? Thank you.
So on the, the Subcommittee on Policies' recommendation to grace and adopt the policies, I think the one, I hope, clarification is that somehow, whether it's through student handbooks, that there's some effort to make the general Malden Schools public, aware that the policies in fact exist, they're, you know, really a recitation of what the state law is, and it does present some obligations, that if that, if that can be done within the parameters of the student handbooks at each of the schools, and that satisfies my inquiry.
It satisfies my...
Mr. Altrino?
It wouldn't satisfy mine, Mr. Chairman, because I have no problem, the law is the law, but there needs to be something, if this is adopted as policy, that the Malden Public Schools does not give out contraceptives in any way, or whatever the wording is, maybe we can ask Attorney Greenspan before we make it a policy, I don't know. But this policy is an umbrella policy, and it will open us up to having to provide, depending on maybe the nurse's discretion or what have you, contraceptives. That's a whole nother argument, that has nothing to do with Massachusetts general law, section, whatever it is. So if the policy is adopted, the way it's printed, the committee needs to realize what you are voting for. They really do. Unless you change the policy...
Or amend it.
Or amend it, excuse me, and add a sentence or two, and I would suggest, how would Greenspan, our attorney, give us some feedback on that?
Jay, I want to wait for the appropriate amendment.
It would be, we meet next week, yeah.
Correct, we're meeting, as a matter of fact, Mr. Altrino's recommendation is valid. We are meeting Monday, a week from today. We will forward this to Attorney Greenspan to assist us with putting together a sentence to...
Clarify the distinction between what's authorized and the general laws, and what the Malden Schools will be, not participating in.
Not participating in, or providing, correct.
May I say something for a second? Nurses cannot, you know, contraceptives, a lot of them are bought over the counter, which we have no control over. The nurses cannot write prescriptions, the others that are prescriptions, there's no way we can do that.
But we can't, we should not be distributing them without the approval of the school committee, correct?
But we wouldn't be distributing over-the-counter stuff, because students can go into CVS and buy those things.
Right, but some school districts do have means to it, but this policy...
But most of those have school-based health clinics, full-range, school-based health clinics.
Well, I just want to make sure that we're not doing that inside the confines of the school. And if it's written in the policy that way, then that's fine. If the committee wants to write a policy allowing it, then that's another debate you can have.
Yeah, the point is, at this step, we're not, we're not taking that, that next affirmative act.
Your job is difficult enough...
I understand that.
...that you don't want to leave room for anything. This policy leaves room for maybe a staff member, not just a nurse, anyone in the building could do whatever. This policy could allow for that, if you read into it. If we have something in there stating we don't authorize that, and if anything does happen, we have a policy to fall back, say, well, we don't authorize any staff member, not just nurses, because nurses aren't the only ones that children might seek advice from. It could be guidance, could be their math teacher. This does not protect us, this current policy, the way it's written, unless there's something, a sentence or two. Maybe I'm incorrect, but that's just my feeling on it. So I think we can go from there, Mr. Chairman.
Superintendent?
I, I think if you want to move in that direction, it would be helpful to get a statement from you or from anyone else, what you would like to have set, because we don't want to go back and forth, you know, have an initial statement, and then say, "Well, but there was something more," and that doesn't really cover it. So the more we can get that nailed down, then we can have a discussion about, about that, because that would be most helpful. And even if you'd like to, you know, share that among folks between now and moving on Monday, because we just don't, don't want it to be like, you know, keep bouncing back and forth.
Well, I'll put something together that will then go to Attorney Greenspan, just to make sure there's nothing in there, I'm sorry?
That we can do that.
That we can, right.
Right, that's fine.
So the Chair will consider the matter to be still within the policy Subcommittee, expect a further report. Ms. Reynolds, you can come next week if you'd like, we understand what it is you're trying to accomplish here. If you want to appear, that's fine, if, we can...
Okay.
...take your testimony under advisement when it comes time to adopt the policies.
All right, thank you.
Glad to have you back.
Thank you.
Well, excuse me, before we dismiss Ms. Reynolds, do we have any, any further questions on the other policies, or any other further recommendations that will be tabled until the next school committee meeting, or can we move forward for adoption of the other ones?
Well, Chair's suggestion is, they came as a group.
Oh, we're going to vote on them individually?
Let's handle them as a group.
Okay. Okay, so we table it till the next meeting?
Handle it as a group, as a group. They came in as a group, we'll handle it as a group.
For next week. I'd prefer if we did it individually, if I could make a motion for next week.
Chair will take them up individually now, if you want.
That's what we like. That's what we have thought process was thinking, Mr. Chairman.
Committee's preference. Do you want to take them up individually?
I second that, we take them up individual.
It's just a motion, it doesn't have to be voted and made for.
I second.
Whatever the membership prefers. Which one are we taking up?
We will take up date rape, statutory rape policy.
And the motion on that is to approve as shown?
As shown, yes.
And recommended by...
And the purpose of this really is, you know, it's a very sensitive issue, and having this policy in place, you know, will make professionals more aware of what to do, and it'll help them with the sensitivity of how to deal with it properly, if it ever does arise.
Any further questions or observations on the proposed policy around date rape slash statutory rape? Motion has been made by Mr. Altrino, seconded by Ms. Rivera Rogers, to accept the policy as proposed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consider approved. Any other individual?
Suicide, we can...
Suicide.
Suicide prevention policy.
As we all know, this is, as always, a sensitive issue. We've got the statistics and report from Ms. Reynolds stating that we haven't had any in over a long period of time, over 10 years, and, but we never know. There's always, every day, there's attempts that are being made out there. We all know that it's a cry for help, and just to be prepared to give somebody that help in whatever way we can, by having this policy in place will give us those guidelines and know what to do if the situation ever arises. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the suicide prevention policy as is.
So moved by Ms. Rivera Rogers, seconded by Mr. Altrino? Any other discussion on the two, and slightly onto page three, proposal for that pause? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So adopted.
I want to thank all the school Subcommittee members, and also the other, the other members of the committee as a whole, for all their help, participation, and reading of all these policies that are being brought forward. On Monday, we will bring forward the pregnancy policy, and be aware that all these notations will be made, put into the policies of the individual schools for adults and parents to review. So thank you, Ms. Reynolds, for all your help, and the administration, and the teachers that assisted you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds, and thank you to the Subcommittee on Policy for its work. Any other items? Ivino?
Yes, in the packet that we got, there was a notation from the Building and Ground Subcommittee of a vote that was taken on Monday, March the 9th, and the policy was for preference for Malden-based groups for school building rentals. And I would just like to make a motion to refer that policy for their discussion and approval for next week's meeting.
All in favor of the referral?
Aye.
Any opposed? So referred. Points of personal privilege, start on the, start with Mr. Duffy, you got his hand up first, Mr. Duffy.
Just because I have a lot to be very proud of with the BB School, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to send a very great big thank you to the BB School for their work on Earth Day this past April 17th. And I'd also like to include Counselors Conde... And I also like to include Councilors Condon, DePietro, and Nester for utilizing the BB School students. We had every grade, a hundred kids for each grade, participating in cleanups at the McDonald's Stadium, at Coitamole Park, Ambridge Park, the Forestale, excuse me, the Felsmere Pond. So, we did a lot of great cleanup over there. And then the students also prepared bags to be handed out at Stop &amp; Shop on that day, educating consumers about green initiatives out there. So, thank you very much to them. And then I've been working on the Walk to School Day on May sixth with committee person Steve Winslow, and I'd like to remind everyone at the BB that south of the school, you can meet at Dever Park at seven thirty in the morning and walk to school, and north, you can meet at Ambridge Park and walk to school. We'll be meeting up at the BB Playground at eight o'clock for a fun little celebration and encouraging people to get out of their cars, walk to school, and get the exercise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy.
Ms. Crowe, head on.
Ms. Crowe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just earlier, on Thursday, April thirtieth, the Ferryway Chorus, middle school chorus is going to be having a fundraiser at the dockside from six to nine, and the funds go to pay for some of the chorus equipment. So, please, they need your support.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. Anyone else on the right? Ms. Abbott, way down.
I just wanted to let all BB students know that on Saturday, May second, they can head over to Malden High from ten to two to make a mural about Earth Day. So, May second at Malden High from ten to two.
Thank you. Anyone on the left? Mr. Froyo?
On Thursday, Thursday evening at seven o'clock at the Linden School, the Linden PTO will hold a meeting. All Linden parents, please come.
Thank you. Anyone else down on the left? Ms. Winslow?
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate the Salemwood School for raising two thousand dollars for the Jimmy Fund in the name of the baseballs for Ben, and also that the Salemwood School Council's meeting tomorrow night at April twenty-eighth.
Thanks. Thank you. Ms. Doc, in?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to remind families that on Saturday, May second, at the Tassano Cafeteria at the high school, the PACT Parents Advisory Council is having a resource fair. So, all families with children with special needs or any disability, please come. We'll have many organizations there discussing their programs available for after-school in summer, so please join us. It'd be a very informational event. Thank you.
Thank you. Need a motion to adjourn?
Assume made.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.